The April twenty second, twenty twenty four East Line Board of Ed special meeting to order. If you can stay on the sample of the ladies.
United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation undergone indivisible with liberty and justice.
Okay, next order is public comment, public comment. The public comment. Hearing none. Well, the public comment moving on, we have a couple of approvals of minutes to. First is the minutes from the April first, twenty twenty four Board of Ed's regular meeting.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the regular education minutes of April first.
Well, second.
Any changes discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose. Thank. Minutes are approved, and then we have the minutes from the April first, twenty twenty four Board of Ed's special meeting, which was the board retreat.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of this special board meeting retreat of April first.
Well, second.
Any discussion or comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, staying. Minutes pass. Okay, moving on, uh, this is now become which I think we all really like, we have a. Topic where we have special recognition and you know, it's amazing what we would. The students who keep coming through here and and their accomplishments are are pretty special and. I've enjoyed reading about Lincoln in the newspaper, I wish I would have got to go to see. Uh, one of his meets, um, I I definitely would like to, um, and I want to pass it on to. Jeff and Holly, thinking about congratulations, Lincoln, that was fantastic year.
Yeah, and I know Kevin, you wanted to say a few words as well, um, so maybe if you want to start, Kevin, and come on up and we're excited, and Candace, thank you for, you know, our conversations and how you're.
Thank you. There are a few words for you, so. I think Carlson, it's been quite a year for our junior wrestler, as Eric has mentioned. Um, ready here for Lincoln. After earning his hundredth win, career win on February third at our very own in our gym here at the Rick Sherman duels, including tying. The school record for most consecutive wins at the time with thirty one in a row, beyond that at this point. He set his sights on a very strong postseason. And it was a very incredible postseason on February tenth, he captured the ECC championship at Killenly High School, one hundred and seventy five pound division, that was his second. Second or third, second. Following week, he captured the hundred and seventy five pound Class L state championship Wilton, becoming the first East Line wrestler wrestler to do that. Since Kareem Small in two thousand and twelve, so it's been a long time. The following week, he went and captured the hundred and seventy five state open championship, becoming the first East Line wrestler to do so since again, Kareem Strong in two thousand and thirteen. And he followed that up with an impressive third place finish at New England's, so the best wrestlers in all of New England. Third place finish the following week in Providence, become the first East Line wrestler to do that to place at New England since two thousand and nine. Because of his incredible year, he was named a class S, a class L all state wrestler, and was recognized as the day's wrestler of the year. It was great to watch him all year, and I'm looking forward to watching him and his amazing teammates. When their accomplishments next year, so congratulations on incredible season, Lincoln.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to you.
Sure.
Thank you, Kevin.
Following up on those comments, uh, my great pleasure to be here this evening to present Lincoln with an official citation from the General Assembly. It was introduced by me and Senator Marks. Be it hereby known to all that the Connecticut General Assembly offers its sincerest congratulations to Lincoln Carlson. In recognition of your dedication and commitment as an outstanding student athlete at East Line High School. And winning the twenty twenty four Class L state championship in the hundred and seventy five pound weight class. We're so proud of your stellar accomplishments as a wrestler and send best wishes for future success. Go Vikes. Our membership extends its best wishes on this memorable occasion, expresses the hope for continued success, and it's actually dated from the date of the championship. Given this twenty fourth day of February, twenty twenty four, the state capital Hartford, Connecticut, and it's signed by Martin M. Looney, President Pro Tem of the Senate. Matt Ritter, Speaker of the House, and Stephanie Thomas, Secretary of the State, and it's.
Right, sure to present this.
Sitting down, yeah, we're gonna get some pictures. Yeah.
The banner.
All right, come on over here.
I do pictures.
Yeah, come on up, Kevin, you wanna.
The group picture.
Picture.
Everybody seems to have coordinated colors.
We asked out the signature.
I mean, you gotta go in just a smidge, there you go. Okay. Good.
Thank you. Thank you guys, oh, thank you very much. It was a pleasure to see you.
Anytime.
Thank you. You save the whole meeting if you want. I was like, go, let's go.
Taking the whole bag.
It's nice to see you.
Oh, yeah, I will. Trust me, I will let you know, Holly.
Thank you.
It continues to be impressive, um, what our students are able to accomplish and. You know, it doesn't matter whatever their focus or want is, and they put the hard work in. Uh, they can do a lot, and it can be such a broad array of activities, it's it's. You can do, you can accomplish whatever you want if you come to East Line High School, like there's the opportunity, which is really neat, and congrats to Lincoln. Moving on, we have a consent agenda item.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda items as posted.
Um, second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye. Always the same. Your passes for those here at home, these are the end of year, year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty fiscal year, twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget projections. It's been the same that we've been showing each time, so we did a consent agenda, there really isn't anything, any changes, so it's it's consistent, we're doing well. Uh, for this year and and for projections for the end of the year.
Just a reminder too, we're sharing that quarterly with the town as well, so they, uh, they have a copy of it.
Um, moving on to discussion action items, we for for finance facilities and community, the first item is discussion and information athletic director report.
So Kevin's, Kevin's here, and Kevin, I'm sure he's gonna introduce Kathleen as well.
Good evening, everybody, thank you for having us again, and I think, uh, I echo your remarks. The accomplishments that the athletes, student athletes here. Uh, are able to achieve is incredible team, both individually and with teams, and I just love sharing their stories. Covering, doing the research and looking at all the history, so. I'm sure there'll be continued to success. Uh, my report today is, uh, just a recap of the winter. Um, and a little bit about spring. We had three teams, it was a following, followed a tremendous fall season with a really solid, uh, winter season. We had three teams earn ECC tournament championships, which, uh, made it seven for the year, and again, I. People ask me a lot about East Line Athletics. Nobody in Eastern Connecticut Conference is accomplishing what these line athletics are accomplishing, seven tournament championships is. By far more than any other school. They're doing it the right way, they're competing at high levels, and they're bringing home championships. And we also captured another state championship, so that is our third team champion, state championship this year, which is also incredible. Um, starting with the cheer team first, they took home ECC Division One Championship, uh, the competition was at Waterford. Um, and if you know anything about cheer, they start in June. And they go all the way to, uh, beginning of March, really, so it is an extensive, exhausting. Season and really their competition is. About in a five week window in February, and so they brought home the ECC Division One Championship. And the overall championship, that was the second year in a row that they were able to accomplish that. And they caught captured the Class L state championship the following week after the ECC. Which is an incredible achievement, it was that team's fourth. State championship, they also captured it ninety nine, ninety four, ninety six, and ninety four, so it was a fourth overall. Head coach Hannah Hannah Taylor was named ECC Coach of the Year, voted on by her peers, which is very exciting. Gymnastics team, um, so doing a little bit of history of gymnastics, it's kind of, we've had a team, we've not had a team, it's kind of been a little bit all over the place. Um, this year we did have a team, we were a co-op team with, we had five East Line athletes here. Uh, one sophomore and four freshmen. And we had two students from Saint Bernards and one from Waterford as a co-op competed as a co-op this year. They had a great year. Um, and at the, their season culminates with an ECC cha- uh, championship, which was on Super Bowl Sunday, actually. And they captured that for the first time since nineteen eighty. Remarkable performance, the girls were very excited, as was were the coaches and the parents, obviously. Um, so they had, uh, many individuals come continue on from there, compete in the, uh, their their class championships and their state opens, and we actually had an athlete compete at the New England, so. That was very exciting year, next year that team will not be a co-op, we have enough. Uh, student athletes to be our own self sustained team, so we will be. East Line Vikings next year, not a co-op team, which is to me very exciting, that's the goal for me, for all of our teams to compete as standalone teams. Uh, boys indoor track tremendous following, uh, a success of the boys cross country in the fall, boys indoor track. Just kept kept it going, they won their third straight ECC championship indoors at the Coast Guard Academy. They completely dominated the rest of the ECC, winning by an incredibly large margin. Um, and I know that you have had Tommy in here, but junior Tommy Matlock was incredible, continues to be incredible, he led the way. Winning ECC, the Class M, the state opens, and of course, as you know, the New England's, which was incredibly impressive. He broke many school records and state records along the way, seemed like every week he was breaking a record, different record every week, and he is only a junior, so I expect that to continue. He was voted the player of the year on, uh, by the ECC coaches for for indoor track. Which is consumes hundreds, probably thousands of athletes, actually. Um, and then wrestling, we heard a little bit about wrestling, they had a solid team season. But they really had two athletes shine all year, you heard just of the accolades of Lincoln, he was incredible capturing all those awards. Championships along the way, but also Junior Braden Solo won the hundred and ninety pound ECC division. And he finished runner up at Class L's in the open, so that is a an impressive run in itself. Overall, we had two hundred and seventy one student athletes compete over eleven sports, including co-ops in. Boys and girls hockey, we actually had two girls from East Line travel to Woodstock. Probably five days a week. Um, and play hockey for the Woodstock co-op, they're the host team in the ECC. Uh, so they were incredibly, and one of them, we had, one was a senior, she was, I think, the only senior on the team, she was captain, Mia Williamson was the captain of that team, um. As an East Line girl, really playing with majority of the student athletes, they are Woodstock students. She was voted a captain of that team, so that was pretty impressive, so two hundred and seventy one athletes, it was a great season. In the fall, uh, in the spring, we're off to a great start, three hundred and ninety eight athletes competing across twelve sports. Uh, with boys and girls, just really busy, if you are have some time on your hands after school. Come on campus and just walk around and you'll see hundreds of student athletes here at Bets Park, um. On the track tennis, I mean, it's, it's a busy, busy place, and, uh, the spring has not been very cooperative with us, as you know, so we've spent a lot of time on the phone and. You know, rescheduling and moving games around, so on so forth, but grounds crew has been great, they've been very helpful with doing the best that we they can to get our fields ready. Couple highlights coming up tomorrow. We've all been invited. Some of you may be able to attend that on the twenty third, we have our ribbon cutting that was postponed from early April. The original date in, uh, April, when we were gonna do the ribbon cutting for the reopening of the baseball field and the new scoreboard, so that's tomorrow at three forty five. We have thirteen sponsors that are invited, you'll start to see, I think you probably have seen the signage along the left field side. And on the foul poles, those are all sponsors that paid for the scoreboard. And, um, and then on, we've made some money on top of that as well, that we're gonna reinvest into other projects, so that's tomorrow. And we also have next week on Monday and Tuesday, we're going to be doing, we've coordinated a. Senior signing day, what we call a senior signing day, so any student athlete. Who has committed to a, any school, doesn't matter what school they committed to, if they're playing a sport, Division Junior College, Division Two, Division Three, Division One. Uh, they've all been invited, their parents have been invited, they've, uh, been asked to invite family and friends. And we're going to do it by season, so on Monday, it's during advisory, on Monday is, uh, student athletes. For the fall, that are gonna be committing for sports in the fall, like soccer and football, those kinds of sports. And the following day is spring signing, so anybody playing baseball, softball. Those those spring sports, we don't have any student athletes at this time, we will, I'm sure Lincoln will be going. Uh, we don't have any current seniors playing a winter sport at this time, so we're not, we don't have a a winter sign. So that will be next week. And then also, just to keep you, you know, social media is near and dear to my heart. We reached a milestone today on Instagram, one thousand followers, just great, um, people continue to share all that information, um. So that's a wonderful thing, face between Facebook X and Instagram, literally thousands of people. A day are watching and reading all about the the great accomplishments of the East Line student athletes. And so, um, that has really blossomed and will just continue to grow. Any questions about the high school before I introduce our assistant athletic director?
How's the baseball field holding up with all the weather and stuff?
As good as it can, uh, better than, I don't know if we had any expectations, we had a couple of games postponed, but. It's, everybody has had, you know, games postponed, so we've had days with really heavy rains, and the next day we were on the field, so. Coach Biggs reports back that it's in the grounds crew as well, that it is doing, quote, exactly what it was meant to do. So, yeah, we're very encouraged about that, yeah, it's beautiful, it looks great, it's, you know, the guys are taking great care of it. So, yeah, we're excited about that, and there's been a couple of days where we could have, it was an away game. And their fields weren't ready, ours were ready, and we're trying to coordinate getting them here, and we just haven't been able to do that, but that will become, you know, a nice option for us down the road. We're still, we're thrilled with that, and the scoreboard's beautiful. Works. It's got everything we need. It matches, it's it's, uh, it's just nice, and we we fixed the, um, the bat, what we call the turtle, there was a batting cage down there, that was kind of in really rough shape, didn't look. You drive around the corner, you see kind of a ragged batting cage. That has been, uh, fixed, and it's brand new, it just needed a little dressing. Around the back and it looks brand new, so it's it's sharp, when you come around that corner and you see that field, it looks really, really nice, it's a good look.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, it was just a quick question, but you mentioned the, um, co-op and becoming a home team. Is it a threshold of a certain number of kids or?
Yes, yep, that's a great question, so I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, there's a formula, every sport has a formula. Um, essentially, it's about half, I want, I'll I'll just use that number, don't quote me on this number, but I want to say gymnastics is four. If you have, you can use two different numbers. When you apply for the state, uh, for the C I E C, you can either use anticipated numbers of nine through twelve students or ten through twelve. Cause a lot of schools won't know who the ninth graders are coming in. So they use the ten through twelve number, and that number, I want to say it's four, I think for gymnastics, and we have five. So, um, hopefully we have some freshmen that come in, we have, every sport has. It's a formula, it's a threshold.
Kevin, you just mentioned the the, you and Chris, Dr. Lund have been working on, you know, the banners and the idea of painting, you know, the poles.
Yeah.
Big mention.
Back to the point I've shared with many of you, you know, like you walk on campus and. You're not really sure where you are, we're gonna make sure you know where you are, and one, one thing that I really. In my opinion, sharpens up a a school campus are banners, light post banners. And so we've been working with Chris and some vendors on, uh, putting the light posts. You have banners on all the light posts, there's twenty seven that I counted on the footprint, yep, is here. Uh, to put banners on there, and also somebody pointed out to me. The other day, and I'm like, yeah, the light posts are green, why are they green, and I don't know why they're green, but.
Everything's green.
To me, everything will be.
Taking some shifts, yeah. That's in full agreement.
How long did it take us to paint this room? It was.
I'm not sure, like.
Everything's green.
But we, um, I've been required to paint them, those light posts maroon. Have our beautiful banners, new logos on there, and just, you know, when you walk in and just be proud of the fact that you're walking into East Line Viking. On on East Line High School campus, so we're working through that. Economy. Yep. Yep.
Um, curiosity question and maybe also an interest question, uh. Tennis team used to be very dominant a couple of years. Uh, I've seen, you know, and my son used to play tennis, I I kind of know a little bit more about tennis, uh. They were struggling to have enough good, solid players, uh. Is is there, um, an effort in community to kind of develop a program? So that we get more players, because tennis is not a sport that you just pick up and play, it it requires a lot of skill and years of of experience. So, again, I'm not expecting anything, I'm just curious.
Yeah, so that's a great question, um. I'm getting my feet correct with spring sports, and I can just tell you. Kind of my philosophy as an athletic director is I have conversations with head coaches at the end of the season. I said in this room when I interviewed that winning is incredibly important, it's not the only thing, but it's very important. And how do you get to win, what does that look like, what is that whole program and building that program, so. I can't comment on tennis per se, I know we have, the girls are out there right now, we have lots of players on both sides, boys and girls. Um, and I always. When I'm looking at a sport, I always look at what's the team and the talent that's dominating right now, and what are they doing that we're not doing? And we have those conversations, and I'll sit down with the coach and and just, you know, just. Being, and I, this isn't specific to tennis, but just being coached and being there and hoping we get good players and win. Doesn't work. I mean, it might happen, you might have that generational team that comes around once in a while, but I'm very impatient when it comes to stuff like that, and I want to have the. Play an active role in developing programs, not just teams, programs, right, sustainable. Year after year programs, and that's not just waiting for that, those kids to walk in the door, it's, it starts, you, I'm sure you all know, it starts here, but what are we doing to? Build those, you know, those relationships with those young kids in the middle school, not that we have tennis right now, but the middle school is, it's exactly why we're attacking the middle school. Um, and all those things can help in building programs, so it's. Um, I asked the same question, not to myself, you know, just thinking like, why is Stonington is dominating right now in boys and girls tennis? I happen to be the tennis, the boys tennis chair, and I don't know a whole lot about tennis, but I'm learning. And, um, those are the questions that I kind of ask myself, and we have with the coach. And the players too, you know, I, the players own a little bit of this, are they playing in the offseason, you know, lessons are involved, and you know. All of that go, that goes along with becoming and being successful, sustainable, winning programs over the long term. Cause we have those, it's not rocket science, it's hard work, but it's not rocket science, so I appreciate that question.
And that's one more question, you were giving us recently in the past month, an update on. You're looking at like logos and gear and all that stuff without going into too much detail, is there an update? On where that, how that's coming along?
So. The logo, we continue to work with the company, we have a small team that's working on finalizing that, or at least getting some final ideas. Uh, to get final approval with Deb and with Jeff and with you folks. Um, it, I'm, we are on version eighty two. A logo, so it started with, there's a lot that goes into it, obviously. Um, but we're, I feel comfortable that we are trending in the right direction, I've gotten some pretty good positive feedback with. Now, we haven't settled on what it looks like exactly, but I think we're headed in the right direction, so my goal would be to have that. Certainly by the end of the year, within, hopefully within a couple of weeks, actually. But then that would go with, you know, like the banners, yeah, holding off on s- stuff like that until. We can settle on what logo it looks like that we are happy with, not everybody's gonna be happy with it, obviously, change is hard for people. Um, but I think we're heading in the right direction. Great. Thank you. Welcome. All right, all right, at this time, it's my pleasure to introduce our assistant, you all approved an assistant athletic director, and I greatly appreciate that, we appreciate that. And, um, we interviewed and hired Kathleen Kovalinka. She's at the middle school, she has hit the ground running at the middle school, there's a lot of work to do, while there's no sports going on right now at the middle school, there's a lot of work. To be done to prepare for the fall, and she has done a great job with that, she's gonna share some of that with you, so Kathleen.
Hi, everybody, um, thanks for having me, um. I'm excited to join the athletic department and work along with Kevin and, um, Claudine to develop a more comprehensive athletic program at the middle school. Um, but one for me that helps our youngest students learn how to become student athletes. Um, with emphasis on, dare I say, student, you know, so they're learning to manage all these skills that are required, um, of them to have a fairly intensive. Extracurricular, um, experience, so we need to support them and how they can best do that, um. I've lived in Niantic for thirty four years, been a teacher here in the district for twenty four. Before that, I was a social worker for the, uh, city of Norwich, working with chronically indigent and. Co-diagnosed mostly single men, um. And upon graduating from college, moved here, you know, from from Norwich and had to adjust to Vikings versus Wildcats, you know, so that was, um, up, but I've gotten there now, um. My, uh, children both went through the system here, had great experiences academically and athletically, um. And I guess now I have to describe myself as a former athlete. Um, hiking is about where I spend the majority of my time. Last summer, my husband, um, and daughter and I climbed Mount Fuji, and this summer we're attempting Kilimanjaro, so. Any good vibes you can send, I'll I'll take, um. You know, the high school has certainly sent or, uh. Initiated quite an impressive record for the year, and, you know, so the middle school on a much smaller scale has had, um, success this winter as well. As I'm sure you're aware, the combined, uh, girls and boys swim team, you know, captured the middle school's championship. Um, both the boys and girls basketball teams, um, did well this year, um, the girls made it to the finals of the tournament, and the boys won their first game, and then they were eliminated. Um, so you know, we're, we're in the process of getting ready for the fall, which one of those tasks is to hire the soccer coaches, um, so. We're in the process of. Getting applicants in, um, and setting some interviews up. Um, the other thing that I see as being really important for the school athletic program is to really streamline and simplify communication as much as we possibly can. As I'm sure you can imagine, um, having nine, ten. And eleven year olds be conduits for information to their families is not always a smooth process, so, um, and it's a big school, so we're trying to to do the best we can to. Simplify things and use things like signup genius and our student life page, and as many, um, you know, digital formats that we can use to help that process. Um, especially since poor Stacy Anderson ends up being that face, you know, for everything as as all paperwork, communication converges into the building, um. So along those lines, we're gauging the interest for, um, the ball sports, and. We've sent communication out through Infinite Campus, both to the fourth graders and then, um, you know, what will be grades, um, six, seven, and eight next year. To gauge interest level for cross country and soccer, and it's, it's quite impressive at this point, um, I think I set up a hundred slots. Per sign up for, you know, for each of the three teams, and, uh, soccer, I believe, when I left school today had maxed out, um, or is darn close to that, so. A hundred people already indicating interest there, um, there was maybe, I think, sixty on the girls soccer. And another seventy in cross country, um, I did have many families ask if, you know, they were able to indicate interest in soccer, and then if their. Uh, their son didn't make the team, could then he participate in cross country, and we anticipate that absolutely that should be able to happen, um, so. So far, everybody's really excited about the sports, and and some families have reached out already and said, well, what about baseball, and what about this, and it's, well, you know, we're. This is what we, we have right now and, um, you know, I'll continue to take, um, interest from whoever. Wants to share and you know, we'll, we'll go, we'll go from there. What you folks think. Is the appropriate place to, to put funds. So the last thing that I, that I would like to, to see happen is to be able to use our athletics as a way to really unify the middle school. Um, increase spectatorship, but also as a way to feature the talents of other students in the building. So even if it's, you know, the halftime at a basketball game or maybe something that can happen on the soccer field where. Um, you know, the service club can, can feature a project or maybe sell pom poms, you know, and kids can have. Here, um, while they're watching the games. Um, maybe the drama, uh, club can give us a little sneak peek of their. Future production, you know, at a halftime. Art club can, can do banners and things. I really liked, uh, the bands, you know, playing piece. Really like to see, um. Attention. You know, the spotlight being on all the different talents in the building and that athletics will allow us to do that. So that it's, and I don't mean this in, in a derogatory way, but it's just not athletics that's getting that spotlight and, and certainly the other areas. They have their concerts and. And they have ways, but this way we can all kind of come together and have fun and share those talents at the same time. So. I'll be reaching out to the different, um. Uh, advisors of those other activities and seeing, you know, what. They like the idea and if they can make other suggestions of how we could do something like that as the year progresses. I think that's, that's my show.
I know. Well, comments and a couple of questions. Um. So what you're just describing is fantastic. I love it to get others involved and I always enjoy when. Schools, whatever schools have, uh, one of their students come and sing the national anthem and things like that. Where it's like, why wouldn't, I mean. There's a thousand students. I can't sing. Here who can sing and, and I as a spectator, um, what, whatever school, whether it's the school I'm supporting or not. It's like, wow, that's spectacular. So I, I, I like that. And, and the more we can do, I, I think it's, it's fantastic. I had actually mentioned to Jeff, I said. One place I went, they actually had where the seniors. Each game got to nominate. And again, I was saying we should do this, but they brought out a teacher. To say this teacher had the biggest impact on my career or life or whatever. Um, to honor that teacher. That teacher was a honorary coach that game or something like that, but they did that. So. Things like that where you can kind of fold that all and I, 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 so everything you're describing is fully supportive. So that, those are my comments and I think that, that's great. One question, um. So like soccer, will there be varsity in a JV team? Is that, or what, what are you thinking in terms of, with the numbers that you have? Like how will that?
Well, my understanding is that we have the funding for one coach.
Okay.
So we got.
So we only gave you funding for, okay, okay. Okay.
And in that league right now, it's a varsity league.
It is. Okay.
So, you know, that question has come up a lot and. So our, our most recent discussion is let's hire a coach.
Yes.
Let's see what that person's philosophy is. It's impossible to keep a hundred boy soccer players.
That's true.
For sure. So.
Yeah.
Um, we'll have to figure out, you know, there's that happy balance of. Too much.
Yeah.
It won't be too little. That's.
Yeah.
Um, so we're gonna kind of, and that'll be kind of on the go. I just, you know, we'll learn, ask next after next fall. What worked, what didn't work? What's the justice of the following fall? Maybe we come back and ask for more coaches.
Well, it would be great to hear back after we've running this experiment and see how, how it goes. Great. And then last question. Which I'm not really looking for an answer on, but. We're now, so basketball, we, you know, there's town basketball and then you had, we, we have. Well, we started and stopped middle school basketball numerous times. We have middle school basketball now. And now we're doing soccer. So I, I'm kind of curious. Soccer is a little worse because there's the town soccer and then there's also the regional soccer that is the same time. Basketball. AAU is in the spring, so it doesn't overlap. How? The student athletes prior, like which is, which do I go? I have this practice, this practice, this game or this two games that are probably like, how are they prioritizing? Are we sending it? Are we setting expectations or of what for our middle school sports of? Where it is in the, in the priority or is it up to the coach or?
Great question. And yes, there will be expectations when the student athlete signs up to the family that. You're signing up for Eastline Middle School Soccer. That is your priority. There's that. You're not missing practice or a game to go to a club. If. You choose to go play on a club, that's okay.
Yeah.
I know that's your choice, but this is, you're signing up for everything here on this, what we're providing you. And so that will be the message.
And we are going to be meeting with, um, Eastline U Soccer Association, just to have a discussion with them as well. I also think it is a way of respecting the commitment you've made, the commitment the taxpayers are making to support the program. I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
You know.
Yeah, that's great. I'm glad you thought it because it's complicated and I'm sure it's, we'll continue to, it'll. There are going to be, you know, individual situations. I'm sure that you're, but, but that's great. So thank you. It's great. Excited to have middle school sports.
Thank you. And to your point, I can attest that I had several, uh, Eastline tennis players beat me fairly well. When I, when I was playing in high school. So yes, they were quite accomplished tennis players.
Vic and then, uh, Bill. Yeah, I just want to kind of second the point that. Uh, Eric made about maybe inviting, uh, people who can sing, kids who can sing to, you know, sign or, or, you know, the national anthem, you know. Yeah. And I, you know, and I don't know if it is done at the high school level, but I think we, we have a choir program both in middle school and high school. And I'm pretty sure there are some really good talented kids who are not afraid of singing solo. Uh, in choir you can hide, you know, because it's, it's a large group, but you know, it's, this is training for them as well. So. I would strongly second what, what Eric suggested if we can.
Yeah.
It, it may, you know, not everybody would want to do that, but we, we, we want, we want to give that opportunity for kids who want to take it.
Our students are not shy.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and it's good for them. I mean, they have, they, they have the record and their own accomplishments to. To back up their confidence. Um, so I have no doubt we'll have plenty of kids who will volunteer to. And thank you for the suggestions because, and I love the idea of the teachers too. I mean, again, it brings back in, this is academics too, you know, you are, you are a student athlete. And so that's a great idea. Very well. So thank you.
Oh. Oh, I, I'm gonna. I had just have taken opportunity to repeat my, my mission here with the whole culture change and. I applaud the progress made so far with regard to, um. You know, behavior, both student and fan behavior, but from my understanding, there's. Growth that's still to be done. And, um, and I just really think that, uh. Winning programs. Need to be role model programs as well. And, and, um, and unfortunately our job. Now is not just teaching the kids how to behave, but. Teaching the adults how to behave because I, I sadly, I, I don't go to a lot of games. The games I go to sometimes I'd get very frustrated about the behavior of, um, some of our own parents and some of our guest parents as well. So. I don't know what. You know, obviously we want to start at the middle school, teaching both the parents and, and the kids what our expectations are, but. And I don't know if there's any way I can. Help in any way with this project, what you, what you would need, but, um, I just want to hear something about what efforts are being made. Um, on that front.
For sure. You will. Um, we discussed that even during my interview, um, that. Model behavior is, is, is extremely important for me. Um, I'm kind of one of the proverbial barkers, you know, on my own team. I have high expectations for their behavior and how they represent Eastline and their families. And, um, so. We've already talked about developing what those expectations would be. CIAC does have some guidance there as well.
And I, it's my understanding there's an award. CIAC has for sportsmanship and I, I would love to see that as a goal.
Yeah. Yeah. So absolutely.
It's a never-ending process, really. Um, and it's something that I attack daily with some of our student athletes. And I've had. Many conversations with parents at games that were surprised to have, they seemed surprised that I was having this conversation with them. Maybe it hasn't happened. I don't know.
Yeah, I, I think that it hasn't happened enough and I think the more it happens, it won't be as uncommon. I mean, it's going to take a little while, but.
I saw improvement in the winter personally at games. The fall, I can report to you guys, I suspended four parents in the fall and had conversations with them about. Why they were not going to be allowed to come to a game and miss their son or daughter's game. And I didn't have those conversations in the winter. We have, you know, like our kids I thought were great. They like to push. It's like any other kid. They want to push the envelope and see what they can get away with. And they know my style now. And, um, and just security style, security works really hard and do a great job of making sure kids are appropriated, parents are appropriated. Winter was, I thought, uh, very well behaved. Spirited, but. Within the realm of, you know, what's acceptable. So we'll, um. I've been kind of given a heads up about lacrosse.
Oh boy.
Lacrosse is, um, so we'll. We're there. We're on, we're on top of it. So.
Yeah. And I, you know, I don't want to get into details. My family won't get upset with me, but it's, there's room for improvement as well.
It's addressed and people are held accountable. And that's how you get past these things like anything else. It's not something I take lightly.
Well, I, I appreciate that. And I think that that's all part of, of. You know. A successful program. And, you know. Maybe even more so than the win.
We won't sacrifice.
I, I'm.
That's my catch. Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So following on to that, which says some. Uh, overlap, we have discussion information, high school facility upgrades.
Yes, Dr. Long and Diane are, are here. Um, handouts too, that they, thanks Kathleen. Um, that they, um, they brought in some of the. Project, uh, ideas that we've been kicking around for the high school, um, that we potentially could fund with some, any of your money and then that.
Sir?
Money that was in operating that was moving to the capital, uh, as well. So. I'll, uh, I'll turn it over to Chris to kind of, and Diane Anderson. About, uh, the items and associated costs.
Yeah.
As well. These are, I think these, Chris, these are all the same, right? What you gave us?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We'll need one more.
Thanks. Sure.
You want mine? You sure? People. The others.
Chris, we'll turn it over to you and.
Yep.
So two documents in front of you. Is, uh. A list of items that we're currently working on and then there's some of the. Detail information in the second one. So, um, as we previously discussed. And, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if I've introduced Diane. So I'll go to the full board yet. I'm not sure if she's been here before, but Diane was brought on as the project manager for facilities and. I have to say it's been, she's been a great addition to the staff. Um, as both an architectural expert. As well as just her experience, uh. And her good ideas and innovative approaches to things and just having another, you know. Professional in the office to bounce stuff off of, although I may be starting to drop a little crazy with some of my ideas, but. Um, and she has equal number of good ideas back. Uh, so. Uh, everything's great. So the spreadsheet in front of you is a list of items that we had previously said we wanted to focus on, at least in these areas. Now those lists, individual projects that grown and shrunk and. Trying to throw some quotes at things and getting some funding together. Uh, as you recall, they're, they're sort of working on two different timeframes here. One is from now to the end of the fiscal year. And then fiscal year beyond, which, uh, apparently that money is now residing. As we know, or think we know, pending final approval going to be in the CIP pot for next year. So. Uh, we're approaching things right now for the end of this year as what can we? Basically purchase, get obligated to get committed, uh, before June thirtieth. Um, we're filling in all the blanks on that sheet again. You know, we have areas, uh, the media center, library up here is one area of keen interest of mine. And I've been putting a lot of effort into that. Um, not so much the library proper as well as much as some of those ancillary activities that are happening there right now. Um, like this one corner is the MTSS corner. They have a technology classroom at the front and then. The IT department's taking over another corner. So trying to give them separate space that they can work in. Um, and. While maintaining, you know, the flexibility of library. And talk about some pictures that she's included about some of the ideas. I want to get to that. Exterior, Kevin mentioned, I'm sorry, he left. I didn't tell him that. I wasn't going to put twenty-seven pole banners on his poles, but. We'll, we'll hash that out between him and I because we want to put, Diane and I want to put some banners and things on the side of the building. So. We don't want to put so much stuff out there that it looks, uh, not. Not.
Crazy.
Yeah, go out there. There's good work. So, yeah. Uh, so we want to balance that, uh, and also we want to add some of the, you know. We've talked a lot, obviously, because Kevin needs to hear about athletics. So maybe we focus somewhat athletic. Uh, banners and whatnot over that. But over here, of course, we have the entrance, you know, the music wing, the auditorium. So maybe we put some banners over here. And then, you know, mix things up with, you know, maybe a test tube here and, you know, math equation there. Just, you know, to bring everything together, recognizing that. We have all these different clubs and activities and sports and music and fine arts, performing arts and, and how can we capture that all throughout the. Throughout the whole building inside and out. So, um. We recognize also as been discussed before, that the signage and the wayfinding needs to be improved so that people can navigate around the campus. Uh, within the athletic area, we've talked and Kevin's talked about due to locker rooms. Uh, he's got some quotes for lockers, uh, focusing our efforts first on a team locker room, just because it's more compact. We're going to do some of the labor ourselves with our maintenance and facility staff this summer while he's. Working with the contractors to get the lockers. So, uh, we've also looked at the south gym. I got a price on the floor, looking for demo costs. So there's some big ticket items right now with the athletic carriage. Expensive flooring that I'd like to put in the, the south gym will last basically forever, but. You know, you pay for quality upfront and it's going to be a little more expensive. But I think overall that's the better solution. It's one of those rubberized bottom floor with folly on top. Um, and when it gets damaged, it's easy to fix. You don't have to recode it every couple of years. You just put another coat on top of it. So you're not tearing it up. So. Uh, I think the better solution. And you can see there's a lot of TBD. We're waiting for a lot of quotes back from vendors and contractors, suppliers, uh, throughout. We want to do some. Work inside and what Diane talked about, those issues or items that she's come up with, uh, aesthetic and whatnot. We have some new security desks for helmets. We're being, I mean, we did make it look a little more professional, a little more organized. And of course, uh. One area that wasn't renovated, ignoring the elementary renovations, which has been an ongoing. Request for improvement, both aesthetically and for, for security. Visual sits out there in a parka in the winter and in his pervia shorts in the summer because it gets too hot. I'm trying to, as well. So those are the items that we're working on currently. Uh, as I finish propagating this list, we'll be looking for some additional input on priority. Uh, as I finish propagating this list, we'll be looking for some additional input on priorities. I think at this late stage in the game, what we are probably looking at is how can we commit the money? In the fastest way possible, so it may be something from here, something from there, something we can get off a cooperative purchasing agreement, statewide contract. Uh, those types of things, so there may be a little smorgasbord there, just get the money spent and get these things, I think everything on here. Are those items that previously you've said were important to you, so we will ensure that everything gets addressed. Um, but it may not be, might come in and say, well, there's a banner here and there's a floor there, and there's this here, uh, until we get through. The next set of money. But some things are pretty easy, the banners outside, once we get a logo. And once we get some supplies, those are things that'll go up pretty quick and obviously will be a very noticeable to everyone. I'll let Diane talk about.
What she's got. I'm gonna just ask a logistics question, so. We have funds from this year, and then the ball gets approved. We have funds July first of next year, so in theory.
My experience so far has been by the time the bonding process goes through, it's usually those ones aren't available till mid-August.
Yeah, I would say no.
So they would hold us off from using even if.
They have to sell the bonds and where they have the funds, right?
Well, and they, it depends on how they write the bond ordinance, they can write it to sanctuary first for up to, you know, for expenses up. To ninety days, so it just all depends on how they write that, uh, bond resolution.
Apparently, I've been losing first month and a half each year with the other capital profits, so.
Okay, so that's the, because I was thinking, July first, in theory, you can have. Two years of money altogether, but if it's, it all, okay, thank you.
Uh, but some of it, um, some of the projects that we're looking at. Even though we might not get funded till August, there are things that would under take almost as soon as the money is available, and even if it goes into school year. Let's say, for example, like the south gym, that's a week, ten day project, we shut the doors, we come in and out the side doors and it doesn't really impact. We hang banners on the side of buildings, it's not a major impact, so there's a lot of things that we need to do into the school year that won't necessarily. Impact in a negative manner of what's going on with the building itself.
So the, uh, attached graphics that I have, that we prepared, um, it's not literal. Uh, every area, especially when I noted signage here, and it's not to that scale, it's just a suggestion of where it should go. Uh, we're working with, um, signage company and furnishings company. Um, after our discussions with Principal Kelly and. Seeing what we could get for the highest and most visual impact that invokes school spirit and, uh, sense of pride for the school. And once you're inside, um, and I did just a little background of me, I started in November, but my oldest daughter went through the. School system here and graduation and various sports, so I was very, I was familiar with the buildings and so the school. And Flanders, um, so I had a little bit of advantage of knowing my way around and knowing where things are. But once you're inside, it's, you don't know where you're in East Lime or what school you're in, so otherwise, other than the color, we don't even have any. Anything that says the Vikings, right in the, I'm talking about the commons in the cafeteria primarily, once you enter the door. So that was one of the, our directives to say, well, how can we, uh, do that? And signage, um, in graphics goes a long way, and one, it's, it's relatively inexpensive. And it's easily changeable if, um. If some, if there's a different overall renovations going on, so on the first page, uh, it's. The entrance is, it's about the wayfinding and the entrance to the actual front door, so when I invited the furnish. Furnishings company Red Thread to come and meet me, she was calling me from the parking lot and saying, well, where are you, how do I get there? So that was a good example of how to get behind the front door, so that's part of our wayfinding mission, um, so that maybe we have. Primary and then secondary signage, um, and just other ways to get the commons, the commons out here. To address sound, uh, we have an acoustical fellows coming next, uh, this Thursday to get an assessment and give me a budget. Um, that may not be part of this initial funding, but carry over for next year to ask, ask for more funding, because that, that is a significant. Concern and echoing from the noise and it's supposed to be study hall too, um. And then part of, part of the graphics and tie over, uh, is going into the cafeteria area, way to make that a little bit more. Uh, the experience a little more user friendly and I'm talking about, uh, graphics and there's a half wall and further down the road. Um, we are interviewing on-call architects and, uh, engineers, in fact, they're. Game tomorrow, now that's something, a project that they can take to the next level, if we must start dividing off the cafeteria and. Closing it off for ease of, um, student control, and there's these discussions about. Uh, kids getting lost on their way to the, uh, they get. The lavatory pass, or they sneak into the cafeteria, or they extend the study hall when they shouldn't be there, so it's just a little bit more controlled. And then making the furnish, furnishings a little bit more, um, aesthetically pleasing and. And allowing, um, the students to enjoy that certain areas in the front, so it doesn't look so hard furniture, because they spent a lot of. Large part of their day there, and then even waiting after hour, after school hours to, um, hang out, do their homework before they go and. Uh, go to practice, so, um, another area, uh, if you go on to the next page is directly outside. Through the, um. Where the cupboard, the cupboard benches are, that's between the. The athletic field and that area, that's something that we want to, uh, help. With more street furniture and special furnishings, I don't know if you can see that one with the, um, new, we call it streetscaping. With planters and, uh, recept, garbage receptacles that all look like they are more cohesive. And, um, the other thing is about the wayfinding, because once you get, I don't know if you're looking in the lower corner with my sign. That more logos that it's about that high, that you could actually find it, right now we have some temporary things there on sandbag. Wheelers wheeled out, but so that it's kind of creates between Flanders, the central office, and no matter which way you get into. Um, the high school, the main parking lot, that is, all feels like a campus, that everything's unified as the same. Um, graphics and logos and tying in with what Kevin's doing, so all of our signage is, um, compatible. And then, um, we, we've lost some trees along the way and maybe the roots are not great, so we're talking about with Chris having, if you go to the next page. Or planters that could combine the roots and they don't do as much disruption to the paving system and sidewalks, which has been problematic. I've learned, and, um, the other side is an example of, uh, the baseball, uh. Using that as a graphic, seasonally signage, not just the saying East Lime Vikings all over the place, but maybe. Uh, celebrating each sport or the drama department, as Chris was saying earlier, so those banners, and they're, you know, they're relatively in. Inexpensive overall and can be changeable, so you're not just stuck with one year round, so it might be seasonal per sport or. Uh, identifying the arts of the spring or music, whatever time, to allow those banners to be, uh, changeable. Or up here, then, um, part of the signage and the wayfinding, like, the next page. It had been taken down on the gable end of the aquatic center, which is, you're driving down the road, you. Right, you almost see that from Route One, it's so big, I mean, that's a little exaggerated for graphics, but there used to be a large, uh, sign there. And that, that kind of helps people draw in and then turn the corner, and then once you get to the. The courtyard plaza, again, it would all be unified with maybe some more, uh, banners on the building itself, just to, um. Jazz it up and help people find where to get to the north gym, because if you're a visiting parent or friend or. Uh, someone in, or the closing team, it's, at least you can identify and figure out how to, where to go. Oh, and most importantly, um, the larger graphic is what we've been talking about with the glass walls. And in the library to create, uh, study zones and classrooms a little quieter and then, uh. Jackie's area, which we're labeling, that's room three. Uh, and then there's what's called room one, we have to meet on Thursday, it's, um. Several people and the librarian to see what's, you know, what they want to do, if this is something that they had in, had in mind, that was part of their. Vision plan that was submitted previously. And this was, I was getting pricing in here, and it's, uh, relatively inexpensive, well. It's less than I thought it was going to be, I was gonna, I'll let's say that, because I've worked with, um, and it's considered furnitures. Under the furniture category, so they can install, it won't be a giant mast at a long time, uh, which is very nice. Yeah, it can, it comes, comes in pieces of parts, and it's a lot more cleaner install, that if they, they can do it after hours or on the weekends or. We have a, a, a holiday or something, so, um, thought that would be a great solution to. Addressing the needs, and the, the way the library, if you haven't been in there a while, the soft, there's softening system. And it's a perfect fit, they're all at nine feet high and just, it'll be a relatively easy install. And then Chris, Chris had mentioned on the last one for the, uh, middle school. It's getting the front entrance and the security area just a little bit more unified, it looks like it was intended to be there rather than, let's. You know, it was a, a need that was addressed with just some desk, but then we added another one. Add another one and then it, they kind of grew and they're, it's a little bit, having the front desk, front entrance be a little bit more. Cleaned and unified and also to get, leave a, a picture that can hide all the monitors and all the wires and. And when you first walk in, that's what you see is the back of the monitors and all the stuff, that would just kind of hide that visually, um. From, as you're approaching the doors, I thought the, uh, the graphics, this was generated by Red Thread Company, so the three D shows. The front, front doors, how it is now and how to get to the front office, Stacy's area and then, uh. This, the stairs are in the background, but we hope you endorse this and appreciate the layout, I think, uh. Think it solves the solution relatively inexpensively.
Is there a need for, uh, kind of updated furnishings in the library, media centers? Similarly, similar to the ones that you mapped out in the commons, um, is there a need for that in the library as well?
Yes, there, that's the original furnishings, um, we haven't got to that stage yet, but I know that's on, um. On the list, but we, this was like a little extra bonus money at the end that we were, wanted to spend, but. Hopefully we'll tie in with what she's started talking about in the different areas, and even if we can't afford all new furniture, uh, the. The rep from Red Thread, um, I don't know, you know, the, all the tops are made out of plastic laminate, some of them are even. Delaminating right now, so it will be easy, you can peel off that laminate and put, uh, a new color on top. Without having to buy all new, uh, because the case goods below are, are relatively in good shape. And she was surprised at how the upholstery has held up in a lot of areas, but no, that's on the, that's on the overall.
Got it, okay, I saw it, I saw it mapped out for the comments and was wondering if it was also in the docket for the media center, thank you.
I'm no design specialist, but I, uh, considering some of these designs here that, that, that you present. Is there a possibility that seating place in the common areas?
I'm sorry, the seating place?
Seating place, like, because, because of the way we are setting it out, you know, with, you know, lower capacity, lower capacity, sorry.
Oh, well, this is just, it's not, nothing's etched in stone, these are ideas of furnishings types, we haven't done the layout or. Figured out capacity and all that. Further down the road.
How do you use the space from this wall all the way to the back wall, you know, do we. Potentially divide it up so that there's a enclosed cafeteria space so that, you know, this becomes a better study or, or usage space when. Lunch is going on and whatnot, so those are some of the. But, but configuration capacities, so we just haven't thought of that part yet.
These are just ideas, okay, this is not a plan, okay, all right, thank you, appreciate that.
So I just have a line of sight question, so if we put a divider in. Right there to divide the commons from the cafeteria, and you mean commons like a study area and cafeteria, cafeteria area? What is to stop students from engaging in mischief in cafeteria area? Like, is there someone that has a line of sight to the cafeteria?
I don't know if you wanna, I mean, we're thinking, I was envisioning glass, but.
Like, that's a really good question, um. We would have, there were people in there when we were using it, I mean, there's, there were lunch people there.
Well, no, I'm just talking like during the day, like right now it's study hall, so they can see the entire commons, but if you're cutting it in, like putting up a wall.
We wouldn't be using that space for study hall.
No, I know, I'm just saying, what's to stop students from using the space, like, is there gonna be some kind of. Can the study hall teachers see into there, like, I, I just, it's a life.
Off or off limits when it wasn't being used for lunch. I don't know, I mean.
No, no, and that's what I'm saying, like, it's just, it's just, it's not an answer, I know you don't have now, but it's like. A wheel turning thing, like, because it's open, like, you can't block the kids out of it, but.
All those are potential ideas that I can brought up that we were talking about is. Is there also a way to make it a temporary so that you close it during lunch? And you can open up again so that you wouldn't lose that line of sight necessarily, or maybe it's like half walls. Record a wall so that you, you still have that whole side.
Good points, we're talking about it, plus, you know, maintaining egress and that's why I had a half wall divider and.
Which I loved, and I was like, oh, I like the natural, and it's, and I was just worried about that line of sight, safety student.
Yeah, if I could build on that, completely agree with Jamie, just one additional point is. One of the reasons for putting the divider, it, there's multiple reasons, but one of the reasons is if we separate it. Then we can, Chris Urban's funds from food services, we could use to. For the cafeteria, fix the cafeteria, and we have to make sure if you have like a, you know, the half wall, which I think looks really nice. But if that doesn't, if it's not a solid wall, would. They, yeah, say, sorry, it's, that doesn't count and you need to do something more, so we need to make sure, whatever we do. Make sure that we can qualify so we can tap into those other funds, because that will help us accelerate. Things looking like this, uh, a lot faster, because there's other pots of funds that we can tap into, and if there's ability with. Like, like the glass that you have in the library and you do half wall and half glass, I mean, there's things you can do. That can make it look, but, you know, these things look, are, I mean, so much, so nice compared to what we have, it's, it's. Need to see.
So I was just gonna go back to, I like all the natural seating that you've put into these drawings, I really, really like the, like, the natural flow, granite, the trees. And I really liked the common seating outside.
Or, you can go, there's some, you know, I was thinking about it, because I think too much, I, I have no idea when they designed this. With the school colors of, or I would say, black, maroon, white, you know, something of those. And they may not wanna put too much maroon, that it's just too dark of a color, but you could throw. Green is a dark color and noticeable too, if you throw light, and I'm not a color specialist, but if you put light grays. And had some of this light grays, you don't see it, uh, like the color of this root, and was, you don't really think about it. As what color it is, and if you added the maroon accents.
The back, the maroon accents in here, but I'm just saying, like, the pool roof is green and putting like the Viking logo on it, it's silly.
That roof's coming off.
It's just like the whole out, whole exterior of the Eastline High School is green.
Yeah, we could be guilt.
Like maroon on the outside, it's gonna look. Like maroon on the outside, it's gonna look.
Well, process behind that, what thirty plus years?
I wish I knew.
Twenty eight, whatever years ago.
Fifty years ago.
We did it for a reason, I'm sure.
Some green, some EB green. Supposed to be, it's supposed to look like. Was it was green to blend in with the uh trees, you know, so it doesn't. We're gonna go with that.
Anything from us now?
I like it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for all your work, yeah. Moving on, the next uh item is discussion action, he's goal vision committee, so at the. Retreat we had. Go or so, we did discuss forming a committee and in order to. Start thinking about and moving that forward, we do need to actually have a motion and an action to give. To the superintendent Jeff, um the ability to start forming that committee, so that's the purpose of this, but. You know, if there any discussion or question.
I have a question, so usually when we do committees, we do we do. There, gosh, my brain just farted, hold on. I don't remember, thank you, I'm glad you know what I was gonna say. Do we do the.
Worked together long enough.
Charge before the committee is formed, or do we do it once the committee is formed?
Once, once we can bring it back.
Can't remember.
There's only been a couple of them, but.
There's only been a couple.
Well, like a paragraph, we could, we could kind of create and draft.
After the committee is charged.
Just a.
I just couldn't remember and I couldn't, I didn't feel like digging to find the answer.
Yeah.
It's like, sorry.
Yeah, it's been a while since we've done, before COVID.
Yeah.
In that capacity.
Okay. Who could be on the committee?
So we would want to look at probably, you know, two board members, um and then uh smattering of across the district stakeholders, so. You know, some high school staff members, um a town member, like a board selectman member, maybe. Um parent, parents, uh student, students, um that kind of gamut of. You know, of people, we might be looking anywhere, you don't want to go too big, because it's much harder to make decisions at that point, but you know, you had anywhere between that would be twelve and fifteen. You know, member committee, it's probably about that, would be ideal.
Like, that's many people?
Yeah, roughly, yeah. But uh, and we've got all, you know, all all stakeholders, yes, you're covering, yeah, precedent, I mean, parents, students.
Signing up for a long run.
Ten year run.
It's a long run, so um. Even when you got to close to the finish line, it's still a long run.
Yeah, uh, yeah, but none of you can leave for ten years, the two that are maybe on the committee definitely have to be.
Say, I would be interested to be in that committee, just because I'm thinking of my kids being like early age, you know, by then, will that something?
It's super rewarding, but I I've already got a marathon sticker myself, so I. It could be in the new.
Right, yeah, I actually got a kindergartner right now, so by the time.
Yeah, yeah.
There you go, I see two candidates. You need to have somebody who's got some skin.
I mean, that's right, yeah.
I like the other high school committee a lot, but. I'm already on one high school.
Yeah, I mean, again, it will, to have one to start too would be great, and maybe somebody else, you know. It it will get over the course of ten years, it probably it might change.
You want me to, the motion to have the timeline minute or no?
Time, but was, I'm sorry. Put like an actual, you know, because let's just go back to, not that we want it to be the length of the elementary, no. Rates if it was eight years versus ten years potentially, and you never know how quickly it can move and how hard we push.
So, and the town financing, which is really important with where they are in the financing of. But the longer they have to plan for it, the better off they'll be, so.
And keep in mind, this building itself, Chris was another four or five years, this building needs a new roof.
Yeah.
Panels come off, it's definitely gonna need it.
Yeah, twenty two, so I don't know, maybe, you know, can we make it last a while longer and then tie it in with either a new building or, and then again, that's what the vision committee would. Would look at all those components.
I'd like to make a motion to have the superintendent of Eastline Schools move forward in formulating an established vision committee to begin discussions on a potential. Eastline High School building project.
I'll second. All those in favor, say aye. Host, stay. Gases, thank you. Okay, so. Stay tuned for the next decade, but yeah. Okay, and then the last item is we have from discussion, we had our board event retreat discussion follow up. And I thought I would just kind of went through all the my notes and Jeff and Annalise's notes. These are the things that I heard and want to make sure kind of we captured of things that we're trying to do and are going to do. Um and make sure I didn't miss any and and uh get any thoughts or comments, so. I had on the board bed collaboration, kind of two main actions, one is that each of the committee chairs. Will work with Carissa on the timing of meetings and work with Jeff to get a schedule for meetings for the year. So in other words, we talked about. Should they be before the board bed meeting, should they be on alternate Mondays? And we came to a conclusion of, well, each committee amongst themselves can decide what works best for that smaller group. And we can work that way um for that, so that was, and then we do want to make sure. Because sometimes we've got a, we have gone at times a decent amount of time between meetings of those committees. So really have the chairs work to get a good schedule together, work with Jeff, so we can get them and Carissa to get them scheduled for stuff, so. That's an action. Get those uh sorted and scheduled. And then we also talked about the district wide committees, so the wellness committee and the DEI committee to give updates. Ed meeting, and we were going to, we did, we added in the committee reports eleven E, you'll see. District wise, so we have cave, learn, and then committees. What a district wide committees, but uh well, we'll, we have that, so we can get updates, for instance, on DEI, I think it's. So you can give updates on that, Jill is the wellness committee, so if there is time, we can give updates on that, so that was what I heard for the. For that collaboration adjustments for the board of ed goals.
And wait, don't forget my mission statement.
Mission statement.
It's it's honor here, the grid you you put, that was on the.
You know, with just the banners, I saw actually the district I was recently in, you know, even trying to put something up on the wall.
Students like painted.
Yeah.
Yeah. We have artists.
Amazing artists here. Do some kind of mural.
Yeah, be better, that would be, yeah, and be creative with it, that would be really neat. Thanks, Jamie, good, yeah, and then. Uh for board of ed goals, I had that will will follow a similar process as we did last year, so we're gonna start. Looking to develop outcome metrics in our June seventeenth or on or about that, I can't remember the exact date. I think it's the seventeenth um meeting, so schools, school will be over, so we can more focus. A little quieter time and and focus start coming, and then at our meetings in July and August, we finalize with the. Goal of finalizing and having our outcome metrics for the goals in September. Um that we're gonna add a check in on the goal progress during the school year, so we had one in March, but we do one. More like that December-ish, November, December timeframe, and. We were, we may, uh we did talk about taking agenda items and. Kind of say what goal they relate to, so we can. And I think we'll, I think we'll try it, um I just want to make, I'm hoping it's not a lot of work. Um or some of them might be like three goals and how we're gonna, but we're gonna try something, let's let's do something and we'll iterate.
One, two, three or four.
Well, that's what I think, we'll superscript it and then have what they represent at the bottom and then and then do that, so. We're gonna try to do that um going forward, and then we can iterate as. As everybody sees them, if it looks good, great, if you want to modify it, we can.
Kind of remember what district does that, so we can put that there, you know.
A couple years ago. Too, it just kind of is a.
I know there's a board that does it and I can't remember. And they they do that on their agenda and I would, maybe we could just look at it.
Yeah, yeah, that would be.
See what it is.
Yeah. And then uh facility discussion, we kind of just had again and covered, so I didn't ever have anything different than what we just discussed here. And then for the admin reports, um we like them, we had a couple today. And we do like the student interaction as part of those updates as well. So those are the kind of key items that I capture, we capture, kind of consolidated. But I'm happy if there's anything I missed or additional. We'll start in as, as we progress through meetings, if we do need to. Check in and say, or do something a little different, or you know, we should just check in and do that, um kind of unapply and iterate. Okay, so that closes discussion action items, and we move on to administrative report, administration reports as.
Yeah, we had a couple items that were in the, with the update, and you probably might have driven and Chris left, driven by last week during the. No, I'm sorry, the week before during the the break, um with the um water meter, that's at high school and over at central office. So um you know, Chris, another blur, you know, in on that, um Kevin mentioned the baseball field tomorrow, if you're free. Uh come on out for three forty-five, we'll be uh doing a ribbon cutting, um we have scissors, we have ribbons, that'll be great.
Yeah, the big scissors. Town hall.
At the middle school today for a new water fountain, it's about a birthday, and uh.
I love that we're getting good use out of them.
Yeah, so, yeah, I got the greenhouse.
Highlight of the greenhouse.
Yes, Carissa carried them to the parking lot from, you know, because Kevin had them, so we'll get them back in for tomorrow. Um nursing supervisor, we uh finalized interviews, so we're working with um the final candidate, um. Contract, so hoping to have that um live soon, we had some really good interviews, you know, came tonight, um that. It was really kind of unique to be sitting, you know, with Waterford staff, you know, Waterford Administration staff members and nurse. And our, you know, and us together, hiring. We've never done before, so um but you know, it's just an interesting process, we're excited about that. Uh the middle school ten month assistant principal position um was posted, so that's a um a full internal and external, you know, posting, so. We'll see what we obtained for candidates for that, um and that's pretty much where we're at. Questions on any of those, see you tomorrow? And we said, she's.
I know she's been in and out.
Hi, I'm here, I made it back. Um just really quickly, the um we are Viking Voices Viking Voices survey. Powered by Satchel Pulse went live this week, so we are working at collecting our first um wave of. Responses associated with that survey, um I think that for our students and our staff, um our response rate will, I suspect it will be really. Um high, uh I, you know, it'll take us some time to get parents uh logged into the appropriate schools in which their children attend. Um it's it's a multi-step process that will take some time getting parents in, um but as they get in, I think. You know, as we move forward, it's gonna be a great resource to collect feedback, so I'm really um looking forward with uh to, you know, what the results will. Show and where we'll take it, um so this survey will be open and through the end of this week. And then um we'll do the survey again uh middle to end of May, and then at that point, we'll be able to start. Um we call it filling the pillar, so all the different, the eleven different categories in which um the survey data is categorized. We will um be able to look at that from a district wide, our district wide school climate committee will look at that and start thinking about, okay, where might be some focus areas. We want to hone in on as a district, given our first wave of feedback, so I'm really looking forward to that.
Any questions? Thanks, Annalise.
Yep.
Hey, um just uh getting ready to close out, you know, like. Almost here, the end of the year is here, so we uh put out an email for all of our schools to have everything closed up and encumbered by May first. So we can get a handle on where we stand, you know, for the year, um and then um. Rolling along with Munis, just sent over all of our conversion information for the district, so. I'm still uh on target for that July first date for us to start, um likely start uh getting some training dates for our staff. I have uh one of the secretaries, the central office, I'm gonna work with her on just kind of doing some testing. Um and so excited about that, you know, it sounds very geeky, but I'm very excited about that. I don't know if anyone has any questions about me about that or anything else going on.
Thanks, Marlon. So back to the administration reports and moving on to committee reports, we had a policy meeting. Sorry. Alyssa. Policy.
Policy met today. Um and reviewed, I think the remainder of our. Our um policies needing update to get us to the end of the year. Will be finished by the end of the year, those will come before the board next meeting.
Yeah, we'll bring a new set of first reads um on the five twenty.
Yeah.
Meeting, yep.
And then um, you know, to your action, we'll put a schedule in place.
Questions for Alyssa? We also had the unaffiliated.
Non-union, that's totally not in the shared meeting. We had our yearly meeting, the shortest meeting that we have in Eastline Schools. Um you know what I didn't ask you is when you're gonna bring this to the board?
By twenty.
Thank you, so uh it's the raises for um our, all their non-union staff. The central office staff, curriculum staff, student services and our hourly staff, so security, school aides and coffee center clerks. Um and all the occupational and physical therapists and speech therapists, it's all their salary and raises for the coming years, they don't have a contract, so. And it's all commiserate with everything else that we've had in our contracts this year, so.
And then Jamie came.
Okay, so I had that. So um. Trice McCarthy, who is the director of Cave, president of Cave, I don't really know. Thank you, she wrote a really awesome op ed that was in the new Haven Register, and none of you got to see it, um it talks about. Um the state of Connecticut keeping their promise to our boards of ed, uh because they have a huge cut on their agenda to us. Um and it's basically telling them you made a promise to parents and schools that, and please keep your promise and fund the district, if any of you would like a copy, I'll just. I can email it out to you, um and there is also a meeting by my account. There it is, there is a meeting of the nineteen thousand committee, um there are four, eight of them. Um that are going to be happening around the state, and this one is Tuesday, April thirty, that's six o'clock, I don't have the other dates. But this is the next one in their schedule, that's with CCM. Tuesday, April thirty, that's six. Cave's just putting it out, they're not sponsoring it, but they're putting out the information, if anyone's. Cave's just putting it out, they're not sponsoring it, but they're putting out the information, if anyone's interested in doing it. Um and then there's a legislative wrap up, May fifteenth at nine, in Hartford. Uh and then I have a board of directors meeting this week.
Learn one topic that I found very interesting, that. Within discussion in the meeting and then lots of emails, which was about uh. Districts looking for some that are looking to do new buildings and the experience that others who have done buildings before and what's their experience, and. The biggest takeaway, I mean, we just went through this, so I don't know that we learned, I learned that much, except um. You know, the comment is, you know, you need to town buy, you know, getting the town buy in from the beginning, cause some, it sounded like. Did their own, went their own path and started kinda pushing things along and not kinda including the town early enough. Um that was something that was interesting uh to be done that way, and it could take longer, and then. But most of the other comments and discussions were along the lines of everything we. Get in the ten or twelve years or whatever, to do our elementary schools, but it was interesting as we're starting to think about um. Our high school and in, you know, what we're going to do with that. District wide committees, anything DEI?
That's coming up, uh May, beginning of May, they said, I think, is our next meeting.
And when's the wellness committee?
I don't know, Annalise, do you, the wellness committee, you know, you and Jill are part of that.
Alright, yeah, um our next wellness committee is on May thirteenth.
Okay, yeah, so we'll get read out to the five twenty, we'll get some reports out.
And yeah, are, yeah.
It closes. Many reports, and we're on to board comments and future agenda items.
I just have a quick comment, um it's a kudos to the pool, I have a neighbor who just put all her three kids through the. Learning how to swim program, I don't really know what it's called, she said it was fabulous, it was great, everything was wonderful, and she's gonna sign up again, cause the staff and. Pool system were fabulous to work with.
Good to hear, that's a feedback we're looking forward to, some shifts that we've made there.
I'll keep the ball rolling and give another kudos, I wanna put a quick spotlight on our before and aftercare and then non-school day and summer programs. They're fabulous, they're fabulous, I mean, truly fabulous, like, I mean, I attended them when I was a student here and the programming. That students have now, the field trips they go on and the activities they do, I mean, my son has been like begging me to send him to before and aftercare. When I don't need to, uh he likes it that much.
That's in my house too.
The, the communication and just organization, I mean, he went to the kinda the, the last two, like, dawn school days and the field trips, like. He was like, please don't pick me up until five o'clock, he loves it so much, um and so I, yeah, I, I think, I, I know we don't talk about those. You know, programs often as a board, and so, um I just, I've been really, really impressed.
Kudos Andrea Scott, you know, she's done a lot, well, she's the one that's. Yeah, she's doing both programs now.
Yeah, and I mean, will email me back within like five minutes too, I'm like, oh, great, she's doing this, yeah, it's, it's honestly such a peace of mind and a wonderful thing. That we are able to to offer families of the district, so.
Not for, not for Andrea, no, um for you to be. But no, it wasn't Andrea.
Or maybe there's something. Other comments? Your motion?
Um I.
Second.
All those in favor, aye, aye, opposed, abstaining, thanks everyone.